Morning, everyone. Can you all on Zoom hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Okay, I'll just do kind of a brief roll call. So we have people in the room and a bunch of people on Zoom. So for everyone's reference, I'll indicate who I have written down so far and let me know if I missed anyone. So I'm Chris Veroni. I'm General Counsel at Fame. Also in the room with me are Ed Spencer, a member of the public, Charles.
Lighthizer.
Lighthizer, sorry. I was definitely going to mispronounce that, sorry. Another member of the public, Jason Mead from Casella, Brian Raybeck from Pierce Atwood, John Ruth from CTBH Partners. I think that's all I have in the room with me on Zoom. And let me know if I get your affiliation wrong, but I have Kat Taylor. Your sign-on says Argyle Township. I just assume you're a member of the public?
Yes.
Okay. Jackie Elliott.
Member of the public.
Yep, thank you. John Emerson, who I know is with Bank of America. Jamie Class, is it Foley? Chris Mussett from Hinckley Allen is on Zoom. Laura Stanborn, are you a member of the public?
Public.
Public, okay, thank you. Lawrence Tonamora, also from Bank of America, I know him. And then Dawn Neptune, I believe is on Zoom from the public as well, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Am I missing anyone who's out there that I didn't write down?
Chris Antonio Martini.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Tony, I missed you.
Chris, Melissa Stevens with Casella also.
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Great, so I'll get started. So good morning. My name is Chris Veroni. I'm the General Counsel of the Fies 30 Maine. This is a public hearing. It's being conducted at just after 10:30 on November 7th, 2024, at the offices of the authority at Five Community Drive Augusta, Maine, pursuant to Title 10 of the Maine Revised Statutes, Section 1043. All the parties either in attendance, either personally or on Zoom, have been requested to attend at the sign the attendance log, or I noted you on the attendance log if you're on Zoom. So I think I'll start just before I read a bunch more of the script. I'll lay out some of the ground rules for today's hearing. So I do have a script to read that describes the project and some of the notices that have gone out and been published, seeking input. And then after I conclude my script, there'll be an invitation for people who are proponent or in favor of the project to speak. There'll be a time for people after that, for people who are opposed to the project who wish to speak to do so. And then there'll be a third period for people who maybe aren't either for or against, but wish to comment and speak. And can I get a rough idea of how many people other than proponents, who I feel like I know who are going to speak? Can I get a feel from the members of the public as to how many of you are going to speak? It's only relevant to my idea of timing and timing considerations. So we have two here in the room on Zoom. Could people let me know?
Jackie Elliott, I'd like to speak.
Okay, hold on. Let me just just gonna make a notation so I don't miss giving you an opportunity. So Ed Spencer and Charles, I've indicated in the room they'd like to speak. And I'm sorry, Jackie, that was you?
Yes.
Okay, and other members of the public? Okay, Dawn, I see your hands up. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Kat Taylor, I see you have your hand up as well.
Right, I'll be speaking in opposition, so if you're calling people in order.
Yep.
Might help.
Okay. Anyone else that's here for the public that hasn't spoken out, that wants to be called upon to speak later? Okay. Okay, so there are five or six people who wish to speak. There'll be one or two people probably in favor or at least project-related people. And then it looks like five or six people from the public wish to speak. That's a manageable number without, I think, imposing strict time constraints. I do wish to ask that we try to keep comments to around five minutes or less, just to move things along. So I'm not going to cut you off at the five-minute mark, but I'd like to try to keep focused and so it's more of a request than a requirement. So also, I thought it'd be useful to kind of set the stage for what this project is about in terms of what this process is and what it isn't. So Casella has applied to Fame, for Fame to serve as a conduit, a pass-through entity for the purpose of issuing tax-exempt bonds that enables them to access through the bond markets, financing that for the people who purchase the bonds, those interest earnings that are payable to them are not taxable. That is a federal government-directed benefit. There are certain categories of businesses that if they're, you know, if bonds are issued on their behalf through an agency like Fame, then, you know, they are treated as tax-exempt bonds. And that's beneficial to the people who buy the bonds because they don't pay tax on the interest income. It's beneficial to the borrower because they pay a lower rate because the the bondholders are willing to accept less because they don't have to pay taxes on it. What this transaction is not is any pledge of money or credit or guarantee of any kind of either Fame or the state of Maine. No assets of the state, no money of the state is already risked to the state is being pledged here. We are serving as, as I said, a conduit or a pass-through to enable the company to access this federal tax benefit. So I thought that, you know, for those of you may or may not be familiar with the way these transactions work, I thought a bit of background might help. Some of you have been through this before, so you know the drill. But just for general understanding purposes, that would be helpful. So with that said, I will continue with my script, which is to say, "This public hearing is being held for the purpose of considering a certificate of approval for Casella Waste Systems, Inc. and its affiliates." Those entities I will collectively call from time to time the company for a project that involves capital expenditures by the company and many of its business locations throughout the state. And I'll call that, those capital expenditures collectively in the project. The project consists of refinancing of the currently outstanding $25 million stated principal amount of the financing through Maine Solid Waste Disposal Revenue Bonds, Casella Waste Systems, Inc., Project Series 2005 R-3, which I will from time to time refer to simply as the Series 2005 Bonds, which financed certain solid waste disposal facilities, including landfill development costs and construction, disposal equipment and related improvements, Maine Energy Recovery Company capital maintenance, buildings and office improvements, office equipment, vehicles, containers, equipment, land, and the cost of issuance of the Series 2005 Bonds. The project also consists of financing the acquisition and development, construction and/or equipping of facilities used in connection with the disposal, conversion, or reclamation of solid waste, including without limitation, the acquisition and equipping of new collection vehicles, trucks, trailers, solid waste disposal containers, and related equipment and computers. The acquisition and installation of certain solid waste recycling, sorting, and processing equipment. The acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of certain solid waste disposal, collection, transfer, recycling, and customer care facilities. The acquisition and development of landfill facilities, including landfill cell development and liners to create additional disposal capacity at the company's permitted landfill sites. Landfill gas treatment and processing infrastructure. Other related costs, including paving, grading, and other infrastructure improvements. Additional capital expenditures for the development, design, engineering, replacements, demolition, construction, and renovation that were or will be undertaken or incurred to accomplish the foregoing and the funding of the cost of issuance and other common costs of the issuance of the 2004 revenue obligation securities that we're here to discuss. All project components were or are to be located and operated at one or more of the project locations identified below. The projects shall also include installation, development, design, engineering, replacements, demolition, improvements, equipment, construction, renovation, structures, permitting, and capital expenditures that were or will be undertaken to occur and accomplish all of the foregoing project components that I described. The project locations are throughout the state in Lewiston, Herman, Falmouth, Unity, Scarborough, Westbrook, Saco, Hampden, Herman, Old Town, Holton, Old Town again, Biddeford, West Bath, Bethel, Mechanics Falls, Westbrook, Marishill, Fairfield, and Watergate. Locations, address locations are in the notice that was published in the paper. The company proposes to finance the project through the issuance of revenue obligation securities that are not to exceed $45 million. Notice of this hearing was published in the Kennebec Journal, Waterville Sentinel, Bangor Daily News, Lewiston Sun Journal, Portland Press Herald, Brunswick Times Record, and the Biddeford Journal Tribune on October 26th for the Bangor Daily and the Sun Journal, or October 27th for the Kennebec Journal, and Portland Press Herald, and the 29th for the Times Record. Casella Waste Systems has certified that it is notified its interstate competitors of this hearing and has provided proof of the same. The company has submitted its sworn application dated October 21st, 2024, and also submitted copies of letters signed by most, if not all, of the representatives of the municipalities in which new proceeds, i.e. funds not used to refinance or refund the 2005 bonds, will be expended as part of the project. Those letters addressing the impact, if any, the project would have on public facilities in such municipalities. Municipalities in which the proceeds of the 2005 bond proceeds were protected to be spent addressed any potential impact of that bond issuance at the time of, in 2005, at the time of that issuance. Prior to this hearing, several written comments were received from intervenors or other interested parties on the project, which will be considered part of the record, including some materials we received from Mr. Spencer, Antonio Blazi, Beth Haggins, and Kat Taylor. So at this time, I will allow anyone who's a proponent of the project to identify themselves and make any comments they'd like to make.
Thanks, Chris. This is Jason Mead from Casella Waste, and I would like to speak for a minute as a proponent of the project. Good morning, everyone. We're looking forward to this financing opportunity and the continued support from Fame as a conduit. As a provider of solid waste and recycling services throughout the state of Maine, Casella plays a critical role in the state's resource management infrastructure. Our workforce consists of approximately 500 dedicated men and women across the state. As we continue to make meaningful capital investment in our main operations, which from our perspective provide environmental benefit to the state, its population, and its visitors. Our investments include, as Chris described, but are not limited to, continuing to improve our collection vehicle fleet with trucks that are safer to operate and more fuel-efficient, recycling processing equipment. And we also deploy capital at the state-owned Juniper Ridge landfill in Old Town to help ensure there's adequate disposal capacity in place for the state and waste that is generated. The site is very important and, from our view, necessary as a part of solid waste disposal infrastructure in the state, as roughly over half of the waste generated across the state is accepted at Juniper Ridge. We also believe our operations provide economic benefit through the host community fees and taxes we pay each year totaling over $6 million and the nearly $45 million in annual payroll and benefits we pay to our employees across the state, as well as other contributions that we provide to the towns and folks across the great state of Maine. Thank you for your time and consideration today, and with that, I'll turn it back over.
Thanks, and Jason, if I could just, could I get you to confirm that both your statements, just your comments just now, but also any supplements that you've made to the certified application could be included within that certified application, could be considered subject to that same certification of the truth and accuracy and so forth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else want to speak in favor of the project? Great, so I will start with people in the room, since they traveled, in terms of people who would like to speak from the public. And I'll start, I don't know if there's anybody who falls into the last category I mentioned, which is the neither for nor against, but I'll start with the people who wish to comment against the project. And I will, I meant to mention in the beginning in terms of the ground rules. There are no restrictions on your comments. I understand that from time to time, there may be questions that you may be asking. There is no requirement that the proponent answer questions or that Fame answer questions. They may, I may choose to answer, but there is no requirement for answering questions. This is an opportunity for public comment. So we'll just take it from there, but so you can, like I said. So I'll start with Mr. Spencer. I assume you are speaking against the project.
Yes, I am. I'm opposed. Okay, I'll hit you with some questions if you want to respond or not respond right during what I'm saying, or should we just wait till it's up to you really?
Okay, well, I think if there's an answer that wants to be tendered, we'll do it in the moment or at the end of your remarks, but so we'll just proceed.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. So first question, what's the history of this 2005 bond to be refinanced? And what was the purpose at that time? I think you spoke to that. That's been spoken to some. But we do recall that Casella went to Fame for a loan to give the money to the paper company as part of a three-way deal when the state acquired Juniper Ridge landfill. And the paper mill was to use the money for a biomass boiler. So my first question is, what's the remaining principal on the 2005 bond? After, I assume, 19 years, 2005 to now?
So it's $25 million. We paid interest along the way since 2005. And as Chris indicated earlier in his opening remarks, we are in the process of extending the maturity on the $25 million.
Okay.
And I would say just to further answer your question, what those proceeds were used for was part of my recitation when I said refinancing them. I talked about refinancing the bond, and I think it's in the notice as well about and listed out the various things that money was used for from the 2005 process.
Now, this, I understand, we understand that Fame is not putting the state of Maine on the hook for any monies. But is there, from, obviously, 10 to 12 years ago, I think in a similar situation, these types of bonds that you're the conduit for, is there a total amount, a total pool that Maine is able to offer this to?
Federal, I'll answer. The federal government permits the state to issue bonds that are tax-exempt in total, not just through Fame, but through the Maine State Housing Authority and other places, up to round numbers, right now, $350 million a year.
Okay. The 11 listed items in the paper total $62,350,000. The ask for a bond is $45 million. Why the discrepancy there?
I can answer that. So there is a cap of $45 million on the bond with $25 million of that being associated with the refinancing of the 2005 bond. The remaining amount of up to $20 million is related to more recent qualified capital expenditures across the state of Maine. And the reason why in total, it adds up to more than $45 million is it provides the company with flexibility to select qualified capital expenditures at the qualified sites that in total add up to the $45 million but cannot exceed $45 million. So it just gives us a little more flexibility per site to get to the $45 million.
Does anybody here know, I'm saying, my comments say Maine has provided Casella with about $20 million cubic yards of permitted landfill space? What's the approximate value of a permitted cubic yard to the waste industry? Anybody care?
We don't believe that this question applies to the financing.
Okay. Casella has large potential liabilities throughout its main operation. Juniper Ridge landfill may be leaking with unexplained leachate found where it should not be. You can see the current public benefit determination license, 2024. In addition, the operating services agreement between the state of Maine and Casella requires Casella to bear the cost of pollution control. The Juniper Ridge leachate is barely treated and then released into the Penobscot River. That's at the paper mill site. Former paper mill site containing significant levels of PFAS chemicals. These must be removed before any additional JRL expansion and will cost about the same amount being asked for in total for a treatment facility. That's just a number I've heard, you know, $40, $50 million. Okay. Casella refused to post the $50 million performance bond required in the RFP, Request for Proposals, before they selected an operator for Juniper Ridge. And I provided an excerpt from Dump Documents Dispatch, number three, with my comments that talks about that. "In the event of a major landfill fire, flood damage, or landfill gas explosion, who will bear the associated costs? The May 15th, 2023 fire at Juniper Ridge burnt over two acres to an undetermined depth." Next question or comment. Has Fame done a thorough review of Casella's history of compliance across its northeastern operation? For example, at one point, Vermont fined Casella $1 million. I think that was over 10 years ago now for anticompetitive practices of some sort. In addition, there have been calls for a review in Augusta and concerns about monopolization of Maine's waste industry. And I also provided a copy of an op-ed by Senator Rick Bennett in the Portland Press Herald about a year ago. 52% of Maine's waste currently are deposited in Juniper Ridge. Now, I'm taking time, I'm gonna skip over a couple of these that he might be mentioning. But in that, we noticed that Hampden landfill is there, that's been closed for many years as well, probably 12 to 15 years, something like that. Is there currently landfill gas utilization at that?
So we shut down our landfill gas operation roughly a little over two years ago at the site as the gas production tapers off over time. So it wasn't viable. Further to clarify, there are no new bond proceeds related to the Hampden Main Landfill Facility. It's simply a refinancing of part of the $25 million 2005 bond.
I think as part of that, there's remediation efforts underway there in Hampden that have mixed results as far as being effective or not. And my opinion is that you should be testing for PFAS in both the test wells and the residential water sources there in Hampden because the Hampden Pine Tree landfill, which Casella owns, whereas Juniper Ridge owned by the state, sends its leachate to the Bangor wastewater treatment plant. And the leachate from the Casella's Hampden landfill has some of the highest concentrations of PFAS in Maine. Let's get to number eight, Juniper Ridge landfill. This is located in Old Town, less than two miles from where my wife and I have lived for over 45 years. "In the operating services agreement, in addition to requiring Casella to pay for pollution control costs, the state as owner, which is currently the Bureau of General Services, is required to review Casella contracts with entities doing businesses that involves waste coming to Juniper Ridge." This, to my knowledge, has not happened. "Casella has not been forthcoming with such information to the legislature." See Senator Bennett's op-ed for that. "This lack of transparency and apparent violations of the OSA makes it impossible for the state DEP to honestly determine whether Casella and their customers are complying with the Maine Waste hierarchy laws." One of the main rules, the Fame rules E1, "In the case of recycling and waste reduction projects, a proposed facility must be consistent with the state's waste management and recycling plan." End quote. "Since Casella refuses to reveal true sources of Juniper Ridge inputs, many from out of state, it is impossible to determine if Casella's wastes are being handled in accordance with Maine's waste hierarchy, which all Maine waste is supposed to follow." "This refusal to reveal details, combined with the BGS violation of its operating service agreement with the state, could indicate Casella is involved with filling Maine's only active state landfill with wastes of unknown sources and toxicity." And I'd like to note here for the record that the state as owner, that is Bureau of General Services, has apparently not seen it necessary to attend this event here today. "As far as economic effects of Casella activities, there is a negative impact on property values in the area." "Casella's dominance of hauling and disposal makes it very difficult for others to compete in the Maine waste market, and more favorable financing will only enhance that imbalance." "Casella's role in the, quote, 'sludge landfill crisis,' end quote, resulted in greatly increased legislative costs for many Maine municipalities." "I have personally had to report at least seven odor violations to the Juniper Ridge hotline in the past year. If I've taken the time to report seven, they were easily two to three times that." "My personal, and this is not a big deal, but my personal logging and forest products business has to cease operations when there are strong landfill gases present for fear of damage." So I made a rough estimate on, you know, rough costs. "Future costs of healthcare due to Casella activities will be a drain on Maine economic progress. This includes health problems for many of their employees who are subjected to landfill gases, exposure to toxic materials, and the threat of fires. Development of environmental tourism, hunting and fishing activities, and playing golf at the Hidden Meadows Golf Course are negatively impacted by Casella's activity at Juniper Ridge. We realize that the Finance Authority of Maine does not itself guarantee this bond's repayment. However, the fact that their 2005 obligation of $25 million for the Juniper Ridge landfill deal is not paid off after 19 years seems to indicate an extractive relationship between Casella and Maine in which Maine gets filled with other states' trash while we also offer them premier financing opportunities." "It is my understanding, which you clarified, that there is a limited amount of bonding that Fame could offer, not just Fame but other entities." "So giving $45 million of that total of around $350 million, that's over 10% for this one company who, by all measures that we've seen, is doing very well." Perhaps Fame should consider helping Casella to finance PFAS removal infrastructure to handle Juniper Ridge and Pine Tree landfill's leachate, protect the Penobscot River from further despoiling. Since Casella refused to post the required fifty million dollar bond for bidders to operate Juniper Ridge, there is very little set aside by them to cover closure, post closure, and fire and liner damage at Juniper Ridge. Just leaving the state or Old Town to pay these costs. This threatens growth, both locally and statewide. While it is true that Casella employs hundreds of Mainers, if not them, someone else would be doing it. So I don't see this as a growth opportunity for employees so much for Casella. In fact, what we've noticed, and I'm, you know, neutral on this, is with that they've they've become more automated, so it takes fewer people to do the collection. Like I said, I'm I'm not. But that's just a comment. So for for all the reasons listed above, I urge decision makers at Fame, join many in the public and legislature in calling for a thorough review and accounting of the Casella operations in Maine before granting them this request. So like, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity to to be here. And it's not that we're against Fame ever offering help to Casella, but we think that priority wise, that we think pollution control is an obligation of theirs and and that that needs to be established. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your comments. Lighthizer, if you'd like to speak next?
Sure. And I and I will leave a copy of the written comments with you, and I apologize for the format.
And I have yours.
I'm writing these comments in opposition of Fame's proposed issuance of revenue obligation securities for the benefit of Casella Waste Systems Incorporated. In particular, and using the numbers provided in the notice of public hearing in the Bangor Daily News. Number one, the biofuels. KTI Biofuels in Lewiston is, to the best of my knowledge and research, not providing biofuel for any Maine company. When KTI was briefly producing biofuel for the paper mill in Old Town Maine, more than half of the biofuel samples tested failed to meet Maine's DEP's requirements for such fuel. Specifically, more than half of the samples tested above the allowable limit for lead. KTI's promise to provide a good clean fuel alternative turned out to be a false promise, and the mill stopped using that fuel source before shutting down completely. Number two, Casella Organics. Casella Organics, based in Unity Maine, cannot sell its product within the state of Maine due to high PFAS content. However, Casella Organics does import out-of-state wastewater treatment plant sludge for use in its products. Maine should not be importing waste from other states. Number three, Casella Recycling. Casella's zero-sort recycling has resulted in the recycled products having little to no value unless no market for them. This is due in part to the recycled products being commingled or contaminated. This does not lead to such to successful recycling, especially when the lack of markets means that the quote-unquote recycled products end up being landfilled. This has also meant the end of many local or municipal recycling centers and the subsequent loss of jobs at those centers. Skipping to number five, the Handen landfill. Casella's landfill in Handen Maine now closed is leaking, contaminating the local soils and groundwater. Their closure plans for the landfill were not effective. And the studies of their remediation measures show that the situation is getting worse instead of better. Licenses state that Casella will be responsible for any pollution. However, it appears that Casella wants Maine people to help them gain advantageous loans for such purposes. Maine should not be aiding Casella Waste Systems while they continue to pollute resources in Handen. Number eight, Juniper Ridge. Notice of public hearings states that the project may consist of, quote, landfill gas treatment and processing infrastructure, end quote. Casella has been telling the fact that a subsidiary subsidiary of BP is paying for the landfill gas at Juniper Ridge. Since Casella is being paid for the purchase of the gas, why do they need more money back by Fame? For this. The notice of public hearings also states that this consists in part of, quote, refinancing of the currently outstanding twenty-five million dollar stated principal amount, end quote, of Fame bonds. This loan was made many years ago, yet it appears that the entire principal amount of that loan is still outstanding. This issue would make it seem unreasonable for Fame to support another forty-five million dollar loan for Casella Waste Systems. Lastly, Casella Waste Systems is not a Maine company. If Fame approves this this request, the result would be less support available from its limited funds for assisting true Maine companies, which may might help improve life in Maine. As a resident of Maine, I ask that Fame deny this request by Casella Waste Systems respectfully.
Okay, so we're now onto some people joining us via Zoom. The first person on my list is Pep Taylor. Are you ready to speak?
I think so. My name is Kat Taylor. I'm a resident and property owner in Argyle Township, an organized township north of Bangor. And I live approximately two and a half miles as the crow flies from Juniper Ridge landfill. I've been active in the last ten years in opposing a lot of Casella's practices, which included skirting loopholes in the state rules, which we nailed down a few years ago. However, Casella succeeded in getting a waiver to importing out-of-state waste because of waste treatment sludge that was being deposited in the landfill at the time. So I'm going to address the things that you said in your public notice, hopefully. The public benefit and substantial detriment to existing businesses. Fame's mission, vision, and core values. Vision is a Maine where all people have access to improved economic outcomes. Their mission is to enrich businesses and educational outcomes to support Maine people. Their core, one of their core values is, above all else, committed to serving Maine people and businesses in support of their mission and vision to improve economic outcomes throughout the state. Fame should deny financing to Casella Waste Systems, an out-of-state company whose business success is based on increasing waste in Maine, directly in opposition to the waste state hierarchy of reduce, reuse, recycle, compost, and landfill. CSW is a wealthy Vermont-based company headquartered in Rutland, Vermont. They reported over four hundred million dollars in revenue for the last quarter, which was a first. So it was a record-breaking earnings. However, landfill closure payments, as well as lower landfill tonnage, caused headwinds, quote-unquote. Reducing, number one, on the state waste hierarchy, landfill tonnage is costing Casella profits. The attached Casella Waste Systems Incorporated third quarter two thousand twenty-four results and recent acquisitions shows multi-million dollar profits resulting from acquisitions and higher pricing. Casella will use Fame money to acquire more waste management facilities, adding to its near monopoly in New England. Recent economic downturns, storm damage, PFAS contamination, rising waste management services costs, shrinking landfill capacity, toxic wastewater treatment sludge added to rising electric bills, are closing Maine businesses. Fame would be better served local small business owners that are the most vulnerable and hit the hardest during rough times. We need assisted living facilities, affordable housing, daycare centers, educational infrastructure investment, essential workers, farmers, and fishermen. These are the businesses that Fame needs to help. Waste management should be locally owned and nonprofit rather than by an out-of-state corporation that profits immensely from expensive materials management services, taking revenue away from communities, leaving them unable to develop their own material management solutions or benefit from the fees or break away from a corporate business model that needs additional revenue every quarter to maintain its success. Fame should give financing to Maine-based businesses instead of a monopolistic, affluent waste management service that seeks only to expand its waste empire. Please deny any additional financing to Casella Waste Systems. They are already an extremely successful corporation and do not need Fame money or the tax breaks. Help Mainers instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next on my list is Jackie Elliott. Are you ready to speak?
I am, and thank you for the opportunity. And I have also submitted written comments. Perhaps you have not received them. I can re-
Hold on.
I sent them this morning.
Oh. Yeah, I'll. Why don't you resubmit them anyway?
I'll give you a fresh copy of hers.
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
I I've added some of that, so if you would hold off, I will send Chris a copy.
You can you can just send, yeah, send me an email.
Okay, thank you. I'll do that as soon as I I finish speaking. No problem. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jackie Elliott. I live in Waterboro, Maine. And unfortunately, my trash sometimes ends up polluting the environment for my friend Ed Spencer and Chuck. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning. I will just note that the public notice was posted according to your website on October twenty-fifth, and you outlined the time structure in which it it appeared in local publications. I would offer that this was a bit of a constrained timeframe for members of the public to prepare, to participate if they they wished. But I thank you for, you know, providing the opportunity. And I would just suggest that you might consider going forward that comments from the public be posted on your website so that they're readily accessible to the public as they have become part of the public record in these proceedings. And I just kind of like to touch on this idea of monies and Maine not being held for surety for what's being provided for Casella. At least that's the argument. And because this is coming from a federal pool of money. Well, federal pools of money come from your pocket and my pocket. I don't think there's a tree in Washington where they picked all the bills, but I could be wrong. So somebody's money, probably our money, is saying it's okay to give these guys a break. So that that's an overly simplistic financial statement. I acknowledge that, but I just thought I would put that in for some context. As you can see, there are members of the public who are very interested in any decisions that are associated with the operations of Casella and the state. As contracted owner of the state-owned Juniper Ridge landfill in Old Town, there's particular interest for the residents of the communities of Old Town and Alton as they suffer the pollution from these operations that foul their environment and threaten their health. They are essentially denied their rights to live safely in their communities. The landfill's operations are a source of environmental injustice, which particularly impacts the members of the Penobscot Indian Nation who inhabit their nearby tribal lands. Their injustice is unique because it's an assault on their subsistence practices of their culture. And they are prevented from eating the fish they catch that would be caught from their sacred Penobscot River. They cannot eat these fish or exercise their cultural practices without endangering their health. And Casella has a substantial and documented record of environmental and regulatory infractions across the region. And you have been hearing about the realities of those impacts. Mr. Spencer has has noted what, how it impacts him. It's also an economic factor for him, not just his property values, but for him, his means of livelihood. These infractions are real and and they should be considered. Old Town is in the process of revitalizing their community, and Casella is proposing an expansion of their polluting operations at Juniper Ridge. And this obviously creates a detriment to revitalization efforts. Generally speaking, as has been mentioned, Casella's operations detract from tourism and Maine's brand of a pristine outdoor environment. Fame, in my opinion, and I believe others here, should promote economic opportunities that thoughtfully renew our communities and support investment and continued remediation of the Penobscot River and encourage build-out of local waste management infrastructure that minimizes the creation of waste and removes toxic inputs on the front end of the system. From the outset, Casella's operations have raised concerns about their aggressive and vertically-integrated business model. And as you've already heard, this has reached monopolistic proportions in the state and across the region. In Maine, we experience a situation that exhibits elements of regulatory capture because of Casella's substantial operations. Fame should lend its influence and reputation because you have that available, and it is worth something. It has value. So it should support resources and ventures that exhibit principled business practices. That's that's an old woman's opinion. Fame has a legal requirement to direct investment that supports the state waste hierarchy, which particularly applies in this situation. And as you've heard, Casella's operations promote a business model that works against the state's waste hierarchy that prioritizes reduction and diversion of waste. It's known Casella's profits increase as the quantity of wasted resources that require processing and disposal expands. And their monopolistic operations provide influence on legislature and regulation governing their activities, which all work to the disadvantage of many citizens and particularly nearby neighbors of their operations. Their operations thwart local competition and initiatives to actually reduce the waste stream. Local businesses have to unfairly compete for the resources and support required to to operate a business. And the greatest portion, as you've you've heard some numbers presented this morning about Casella's financial gains, most of those gains leave our state, other than, you know, what they would pay their employees. Mr. John Casella has a very cushy lifestyle. Fame has a record of investment in enterprises that promote economic development on a consistently local level and that reflect the shared values of Mainers and attract further investment in the state. And in my written comments, I've included a, an impressive list of that support the Fame has provided over the year, over the years. Maine's common economy is stimulated in our communities, and the dollars primarily circulate in those communities relative to those examples that I provided. And and this is, in my opinion, the way Fame's support should be utilized. Casella is a billion-plus-dollar company and does not fit the profile of a Maine business that operates sustainably to grow the local economy and workforce. The model is not an example of the values that make Maine the way life should be. Casella's request strains the public benefit obligation that must be met by Fame and hinder its development of locally owned operations and infrastructure that would move waste and materials management forward to better meet the specifications of the waste management hierarchy. Fame has a record and reputation that supports authentic Maine FAME has a record and reputation that supports authentic Maine-generated business and therefore should not approve Casella's applications for $45 million worth of bonding surety and federal tax breaks to finance and refinance its various operations across the state. Casella should invest its own profits to that purpose if they so desire. And I thank you very much for considering my comments, and I will get my written comments submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. I did actually check my email and see that you had emailed me some written documents, so I do in fact have them.
Okay, thank you. Then I won't blast your mailbox.
Okay, thank you very much. So the last person who previously indicated they wanted to speak on Zoom was Dawn Neptune. Are you available to speak?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Morning.
Enda Louisi Dawn Neptune Adams. N'chial Banaweb Skewi. Sk'jinuwe Abid Bakum Torum. My name is Dawn Neptune. I am a member of the Penobscot Nation. I am here as a member of the public, but also in my capacity as a member of Sunlight Media Collective. I've been a waste policy activist since 2012. I have, with my fellow waste policy activists and advocates, chronicled Casella's, you know, mismanagement of the state-owned landfill at Juniper Ridge landfill. Back in, I think it was 2013, there was a Penobscot River Restoration Project. It was a partnership between the federal government, environmental and conservation groups, the Penobscot Nation, state agencies, and many others. And it was meant to clean up the Penobscot River. It was also meant to improve access to upstream and upriver spawning grounds for the fish that we depend on. There was a lot of work done by a lot of people. And the Penobscot River has started to return to its natural state. Fishing access upriver has improved with, you know, access that was built with federal funding and state funding and the work of many, many people. The Penobscot Nation is currently doing a salmon restoration project, working on that so that we can have access to our treaty-reserved sustenance fishing rights. All of this work that has been done by all of these agencies, both state, federal, by activists, by conservation groups, environmental groups, even sporting groups who want to be able to fish as well. All of this work is for naught if the fish that would be caught out of the river is too poisonous to eat. Now, more than 15 million gallons of leachate is dumped into the river just south of my reservation at the Penobscot Nation per year, per year. The wastewater treatment facility at Nine Dragons Paper Mill is inadequate. It is old and decrepit. It was only ever meant for paper mill wastewater treatment. Back in 2017, myself and other waste policy activists found out that the water was being sent to a better treatment facility, a treatment facility that had won 12 awards in the previous 15 years. We celebrated that as a victory because we knew how badly the river was being polluted when the leachate was processed at Nine Dragons facility. That only lasted for about six months. We later found out that that municipality had refused to do the treatment because of the sheer amount of sludge that they were being sent. They couldn't handle it. So if a state-of-the-art facility, wastewater treatment facility, couldn't handle the level of sludge and leachate that was coming from Juniper Ridge landfill, how can an old, decrepit, former paper mill wastewater treatment plant handle it? And the answer is, they don't. It's inadequately treated, minimally treated, and then pushed right out into the Penobscot River. I agree with the statements of many people here who have said that FAME's money would be better invested into small businesses, into the farmers that keep us fed, into, you know, housing, and many other projects that would be better for the community rather than, you know, just throwing it into this money pit that is Casella. I remember back in 2019, 2020, John Casella bragged about, you know, a billion dollars a year of profit. They don't need this money. Small businesses need this money. People who are unhoused and waiting for affordable housing need this money. Also, I'd like the public to know that Casella has a practice of intimidating waste policy activists. I myself have experienced and documented Casella's intimidation tactics. Their trucks show up wherever I go, in places where they shouldn't be. You know, family events this summer while I was camping out. And it's just a way of trying to silence activists who are opposed to, you know, the kind of pollution and stuff that they're doing. And I don't think that's something that FAME would want to fund. I don't know, maybe Bank of America would disagree. But yeah, I don't think that would be very good on FAME's spreadsheets. So anyway, in closing, I thank you for your time. I thank you for listening. And yeah, put this money to better use.
Thank you, Ms. Neptune. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak who has not had an opportunity to speak? Who? Ms. Taylor, your hand up?
I'm sorry. Yes, I thought you were going to ask for people who hadn't spoken yet. I appreciate you giving me a couple more minutes to add to comments on what I've heard since I spoke first, after Ed and Chuck, of course. One of the things the Casella representative, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, had said that Casella pays taxes in a certain amount to the state of Maine, which any company who was operating waste management services in the state would still pay those taxes. So that's really not much of an endorsement. The fact that they earn so much money increasing the amount of waste rather than reducing the amount of waste is a testament towards for-profit waste management services. Until we change that model, we're not going to have any headway in raining in the waste in this state. And the fact is, we don't need Casella anymore. All of the, you know, 20 years ago, when they were making a deal with an old mill to get a grandfathered landfill in, nobody thought there would be money in waste management, but Casella did because they'd already been fighting the headwinds in Massachusetts and other states in New England. So at this point, all of the, you know, the structure is in place. We have engineering groups that know about waste management and developing landfills and recycling centers. We have other entities that are investigating advanced recycling, they call it. I'm not quite sure what that will come out to be, but we'll wait and see. And also, Casella's operating services agreement has not been extended yet, even though that was a condition that they said would be necessary if they were going to go forward with the expansion of Juniper Ridge landfill, which also has not been approved yet. They have only gone through the first hurdle of an application for a public benefit determination, and there's a long road ahead. So for FAME to assume that Casella will still be running waste management services next year even is premature, I believe. And also, again, like others have said, we need to support our Maine businesses that are struggling rather than putting money into an already profitable enterprise. So thank you again for allowing me to speak, and I did submit my written comments, which include the full financial review for this year from Casella, which I hope you'll read through. I did highlight and annotate a few spots, so thanks again for allowing me to participate.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I did get your written comments this morning, and they'll be part of the record. Is there anyone who has not spoken who wishes to speak? Either for, against, or neither for nor against. Okay, that concludes the public hearing. I will leave the record open. We are awaiting a written assessment of the project of the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. The record will remain open until we receive that assessment, but we'll close no earlier than 5:00 PM tomorrow, Friday, November 8, 2024. So if there's people who wanted to submit additional materials, they have until that time to do so. And that's it. Thank you for your participation.